Welcome to the work session here on December the 30th, 2020. We trust that everybody had as merry of Christmas as possible. And that you probably got together in those smaller groups than you have in the past. But, you know, I think we are all cognizant of trying to be as careful as we possibly can in all our encounters with families and friends and so forth. We're very pleased today to have with us Dr. David Lowery with the Caldwell UNC Healthcare. So thank you very much, Dr. Lowery, for being with us. And we also have Anna Martin from the Health Department. And we've had Anna and seen Anna here before, and Anna, we appreciate your being here as well. We look forward to some good information, conversation here. So we'll move along here as quickly as we can. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, which is a very simple agenda. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda as presented?
Chairman Pillon, if we approve the agenda as has been presented?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye or aye, he opposed, and the motion passes. So we will move along now with our superintendent as he gives us an update on COVID situation. So Dr. Fitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and tell you if that's okay.
Sure.
I also want to mention that we've got Board Member Jeff Sims is joining us via Zoom, and Dr. Jeff Church is with us. And then we also have several folks that are going to be participating in the meeting in terms of listening and watching via YouTube. So we have a couple of different venues media-wise for information to go out. What I've tried to do is put together for you, I guess this is round three of an update with regard to COVID, and give you kind of current picture of where we are countywide. And I know you receive a great deal of information from a variety of sources, and I wanted to share with you what we have, and we're going to share the screen. And I'm going to just flip through some PowerPoint slides. Not a great deal of narrative on the slides, more of a picture of charts and graphs and some of the things that we're working through. And then ultimately kind of toss the ball back to you all to see what kind of questions you have, where we are moving forward and that type thing. Right before the Christmas break, there was a bevy of activity around the state with school districts that had changed their decision on what they were doing related to student services, planning the service delivery, and how school would look when they came back to school in January. And when one county makes that decision, then a lot of folks started looking around to determine what a weekend it is. And we took the approach that we felt like we needed to wait until we had current information to make a decision in the middle of December about what would be going on in early January might or might not be active. We also wanted to have an opportunity to talk to Dr. Lowery and Laura Easton and Anna and others that we really rely on. And that's really what's in the presentation that we want to show you. What I want to encourage you is throughout the presentation, at the conclusion of the presentation, whenever you feel appropriate, if there's a question that you want to ask for clarification, if there's something that you just don't know that you've heard about as we've gone through this now for one semester, we want you to have the opportunity to have that open forum today. But at the end of the day, what I hope is that you feel like you've gotten as much information that's current as you possibly can get, and that the decision that you've made, although it won't be perfect, is the best decision that we can make moving forward. And I'll say this several times, this is brought to light for me, this whole experience, there are many, many different perspectives in our community. And stakeholder groups have similar perspectives and very wide-ranging perspectives. People that are in completely different stakeholder groups have wide-ranging perspectives, and some are very similar. It just depends on who you talk to. And I can have a conversation with one person who is advocating a particular reaction, and then hang up the phone and have somebody come in in person, and they're advocating for something completely different. So there are a lot of different ideas, and I want to try to understand the viewpoint and the perspective that people are coming from. But at the end, understanding that we have a very difficult decision to make. So with that in mind, I'm going to go through, I'm also, I'm not trying to make any political statements, I'm not trying to push an agenda one way or the other. I'm sharing with you the information as it currently looks in our county related to what we're dealing with, and then letting you kind of guide the discussion and ask questions. Before I get started into the date, I want to say, from the very first day that we were dealing with this back in March of 2020, the individuals that are on the screen here have been tremendous partners. They've been advocates, they've been partners with us as we've gone through. We've learned from each other, they've learned from us, we've learned from them, we've put our heads together, they've helped us troubleshoot, but the Health Department, the folks at UNC Caldwell, our medical and healthcare providers, first responders, the folks from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the DPI partnership that we've had. The Northwest RESA is a regional group made up of districts in the northwestern part of, northwestern RESA, the northwestern part of North Carolina. Those superintendents are peers of mine that I rely on to talk with them about what they're doing that's working well, and we share ideas back and forth. Curriculum leaders meet, human resources folks meet, so we have a lot of contact with that particular group. And our staff members, certainly you all as a Board of Education, I can't thank you enough, and CCC and TI and the work that they're doing as we partner together in our community for education, just a big thank you to them ongoing for the work that they do. And I'm not going to go into a historical recount of everything that happened here because I have a year through the New Year's Day, and I don't want to do that. What I want to do is to think back at kind of points in time that were significant for us, where we were realizing something was going to happen in terms of a change, or some things we had to put in place, and we didn't know what the outcomes were going to be, and we were looking at planning for that point and then looking beyond that. And the three that come to mind to me immediately are looking back in March when we had that first break, and none of us knew if we were going to be out for two weeks or a month, or I don't think many folks would have thought that we'd be in the situation that we're in at the break of the year going into 2021. But we got a lot of information, we sat down and gathered as much information as we could, and advice, and we put together a plan, and you all know what that looks like. That's kind of well documented, and we all lived through that. And then as we were going through what was happening at that point in time, we had the, we were on the precipice of the school year starting back, and we had a decision to make based on what the governor had given us guidance on, and we had to make specific decisions in each LEA that met the needs of the LEA, and you all know what that was like. And we made that decision, we didn't know what the outcomes were going to be. And I'll tell you, there was a lot of kind of holding our breath and waiting to see what things were going to look like when we started on the 17th of August. We were waiting until we got to think to the Labor Day break, and then we were waiting for the first nine weeks, and then we finally to the end of the first semester to get a sense of where we are. And then we were looking at post-Thanksgiving 2020, and we knew that there would be get-togethers, and there would be family that would be together, and whether or not we'd see rising cases. And we got to that point of post-Thanksgiving 2020, and again, you all have lived it, so you know what that looks like. Well, as we stand here today in December, on December the 30th of 2020, I want to think about anticipation and what we're looking at, the things that we don't know the answers to the questions, the things that we know could have an impact on what we do. One is going to be post-Christmas 2020, and we're in post-Christmas 2020. But how far out do we go in terms of seeing the impacts of what may wind up being positive cases or potential close contacts that turn into quarantines? That's something that's immediately on our radar because we're in the middle of that right now. Post-New Year's Eve 2021, is that right, 2021 or New Year's Eve 20, whatever? On December the 31st, 2020, moving into New Year's Day of 2021. And this is probably a bigger issue for particularly older teenagers and then into adulthood. This is more of an adult thing, as folks get together and they have fun and celebrate the new year coming in, what impact will that have as we move forward post-New Year's Eve? And we won't know that until we get to that point. And then ultimately, January 2021, and it incorporates a lot of those others, and we're trying to get a sense of where we are. You know, if we have any historical perspective, we look back at what happened in November, and we know what the end of November into December looked like with spikes in cases. And I think we anticipate that we'll see something like that. Is it as high? Is it higher? We just don't know the answer to that yet, but we want to be aware of it. What have we learned? Now, we, again, from March until the point where we are right now, we've learned that the top characteristics on that line for everyone involved are critical. And I want to thank everyone who we work with for these characteristics, for being patient, for being flexible, for being adaptable, and for the perspectives that they have. Because we all have our own perspectives, but to hear from someone else who's looking at it in a different way helps us understand it in a different light, and I think that's very important. I want to thank our staff and for the work that they've done, and some things that we've learned is that we could establish routines and expectations, and our students generally follow those. You know, we didn't know when we started back in August what it was going to be like asking elementary, middle, or high school students to wear masks all day long. But our folks have responded to that, and it's due in large part, I think, because of the great work that our staff has done in establishing expectations and routines. Again, our students who have responded, you know, we've learned right now that we operate in about a two-week window. We can't look any further out than that. We can look out, but we can't make definitive plans because things are changing so quickly. The guidance that we get changes, the situations that we're dealing with change. So it's very difficult to plan more than about a two-week window period of time. We know more than ever that the mental health of our stakeholders, and that includes students and adults and family members and anybody else who's a stakeholder, need to continue to be monitored. We feel like that's why it's so important that we do that regular check-in with individuals. It's also why we feel like the face-to-face contact that we have person-to-person is so important to make sure that we're checking on the mental well-being of the individuals that we have a chance to work with. Roles have changed, and the associated duties have too. And you think about a teacher in a school, or an assistant in a school, or a school nurse, or any, you pull any name, any title, any job, the associated roles and responsibilities have changed because we're having to pick up extra duties. You know, we weren't taking temperatures, and we weren't doing the wellness checks and things like that this time last year, but we've all picked up that work and we've run with it. But it's tiring, it's taxing, and it weighs on us in terms of what we have to do. I've mentioned the value of person-to-person contact, there's really no substitute for that, getting on the Zoom call or FaceTime, or doing something else where you're able to see and talk if someone has some value, but there's not anything to replace that person-to-person contact that you have. We've addressed technology needs, long-term, and some that are far in the future that we're going to be working on, and the feeding opportunities, you know, I don't want to dismiss that. Before we got to Labor Day, somewhere in the month of, end of August, early September, we had fed over a million meals to families in our communities. And many of these are individuals who didn't know where the next meal was going to come from. And that was made possible by changes in the federal government's School Lunch Program guidelines, where every student, really every person in our county from birth to 18, is able to eat free. Now, I need to mention, since I'm talking about that today on the 30th, we have feeding, the food pickup today at our three traditional high school sites from 11 until 2:00. And it's open up to everyone, ages zero to 18. So we want to make sure that folks that need food get by and pick that up today. We want to encourage them. But I can't thank enough, our child nutrition staff and the volunteers who have worked with them, many of you all in the room have been out to do that kind of work to make sure that we're meeting a need that doesn't show up under an education heading. But if we don't feed our children, and our children aren't getting those basic needs met, then the act of educating is pushed to a much lower level as they try to get those needs met, so grateful for that. Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Fitz, is the feeding also going to be from 4:00 to 6:00 today, or is it just going to be the 11:00 to 1:00?
Just 11:00 to 2:00 today.
11:00 to 2:00, okay.
And again, we encourage anyone who would benefit from that to go up to one of our three traditional high schools. Moving through, I want to share with you some challenges that we face as well. Changing guidance, again, no fault to anyone, research may change, the numbers may change, the protocol that we follow may change, but that change is what we do too. So if, for example, if the quarantine guidance from the CDC were to change, it would trickle down to us where we may have to change some of what we're doing. And we see that from time to time with things related to COVID and how we interact with the people that we interact with in the schools. We're trying to be proactive with regard to COVID, but we're also having to be reactive. And I'd much rather be in a proactive mode of plan and feel like we've got our ducks in a row, but there are just things that happen that are thrown on us that we have to react to, and we want to make sure that we're operating out of a proactive role more than a reactive. But knowing that we've got Dr. Lowery and Anna Martin, folks like that, that are in our community to help us when we have to react to something, sure makes me feel a lot better. Our quarantine numbers is a challenge. I think I told you back in October that I think every superintendent in the state would tell you the greatest threat to us in terms of operations was not going to be the number of positive cases we had, but were going to be the number of quarantine cases that we had, primarily of students because of the operational demands that we have in our schools. And that continues to be a concern, and we'll share some numbers with you, and we'll go through this very quickly. Funding to meet the immediate needs that we have, basic operations staffing, PPEs, we're working through that. Integrity and consistency in educational offerings is a child who's on Caldwell Connect receiving the same quality instruction that a child is in person and vice versa. Whether you're in elementary or middle or high school, we want to make sure that that continues. Continuity for our sixth through 12th grade students that are in school on an AABB day, we all talked about that over two different board meetings in the last couple of months, is something that we continue to monitor. And then athletics and extracurricular activities. And we're getting into a season, which is unusual, we're talking about some of the sports that we talked about in the winter, but we're moving into an athletic time point of period where there'll be more of that going on, and there'll be some challenges that we face regarding that. What I want to share with you here are charts that you've seen, and I've not done anything to these other than pull the numbers. And I want to thank Page Counts, the PIO for the county, who's just been incredible in terms of pulling data and pushing information out. And some of this comes directly from Page's spreadsheet, and some of it comes from the reports that Page sends out, and I'll show you what those look like. But all of the data that I've gotten that I've put in the spreadsheet comes directly from Page. And some of those numbers may be a little bit different depending on the reporting source, but I want to be consistent with the reporting source that I was pulling from. So that's where this comes from. This is a chart that shows you what the daily positives in Caldwell County. Some of these will be called confirmed, these are confirmed cases of COVID in our county, and this goes back to the 1st of October. I could have stretched this back to the beginning of March, but I was trying to put something together in terms of the timeframe to let you see what we're dealing with. This graph gets skewed a little bit because of the number, and I know you can't see it probably when I do this online, this data point right here is the first time that we went over 200. And whenever you put a chart like that and you have a data point of 200, you have to be able to accommodate for that on the chart, and it changes the way things look. But it's real data, and it's there. And you can certainly see that our high mark points are in a certain area when you look at month and the times of the month that we're dealing with there. But that shouldn't be new to you, you've seen that, we've been tracing it, the governors talked about it in all the updates. This is the same data, and all I did was gave you a shorter window, this is from the 1st of December to kind of give you an idea of where we're at in December. And I don't know, and I'm going to ask Anna and Dr. Lowery, if they will, in a minute or two, to talk with us about what the numbers look like after Christmas. I don't know if there are folks that are out of town and haven't tested, or I don't know if there are folks that are out of town and haven't tested, or they're busy doing things and they would anticipate that we'd see high numbers in early January. But you can see there from the middle of December to the end of December, things are better, but they're still not good. I mean, that that middle line is 100. And we're talking about cases over 100 on a daily basis for many of these days, which is very troubling. Then I want you to look at age bands, because we take a look at the total number of confirmed cases that we have, and we know that they're going up. The question that I think for me that begs to be answered is what does that data look like with respect to school-aged children? Now, understand, this is zero to 17 because this is the way the data is presented. I'm not accounting for 18-year-olds here. So there are probably, there certainly would be some 18-year-olds that are there, but what I have is zero to 17. If you look at the chart, these are the confirmed cases. The orange line would be your total number confirmed. This would be on the report that I pulled on the last day of the month for August, September, October, November, and yesterday, which will be December the 29th. And you can see that there's a very clear trend on that total number going all the way up. That is from birth until however old the oldest person would be that's going to be tested. I don't think that should surprise you because you know our cases are going up. But did you know that what the bottom line, the zero to 17, what that looks like with respect to total cases? The number's going up. Now, that's misleading some because you've got a bar up there that has a really large number, and it may skew the bottom number here, but I wanted you to see that in perspective. As overall numbers increase, you're going to have more students that are going to test positive. But what does that percentage and spread look like? This is what that line looks like if you put it on the chart by itself. And you can see that the trend looks a little bit different when you're comparing only zero to 17-year-olds over the same period of time. No question, the numbers are going up, that they certainly have gotten higher. This is what it looks like when you break it down. Zero to 17 would be the blue line at the top. This takes out all the other other people in the population that are over 17. So the blue line would be the one that you just saw. And then the zero to five is the orange line, six to 10 would be the gray line, and 11 to 17 would be the yellow line. And that probably doesn't surprise you. And I don't know, we haven't dug down enough and I'm not sure that there's a way to find it, but in that 11 to 17 range, my guess would be that most of the the folks there are in the upper age limits of 11 to 17, based on the other data that we've seen. And this is just kind of showing it in the same way, the blue line being everybody zero to 17, and then the breakdown of orange, zero to five, gray, six to 10, and yellow, 11 to 17. You know, 466 folks in our county that are between 11 and 17, that's what the cumulative number is when we get to the end of December. That's frightening for me when I think about it. And even the smaller numbers, 152 or 138 for the younger students, those are scary because we know what the potential danger and harm is for those folks. If you take a look at the overall total number of people that are positive from range zero to whatever number you can go to to be at the highest level, and you compare the zero to 17-year-olds to that, while the number's going up in terms of positive cases, I wanted to show you that the percentage of those positives is lower for school-aged students. Now, again, this includes zero to five-year-olds too. So back in, at the end of August, of all of the positive cases, almost 14% were included from the age group of zero to 17. And we go to December, 12%. Now, that's not a great giant drop, but I'd much rather go down 2% than go up 2%. And what I would hope this points to is the fact that things that we're doing in our schools are working for our school-aged students. Because we know the overall population is going at a high rate, you would expect the student numbers would go at the same rate, but in terms of a comparison, those percentages are dropping. And I'm not suggesting that there's no danger, I'm just trying to show you the facts of what those numbers look like. There's some other information in terms of charts and graphs, and it's going to come from Human Resources, and Dr. Griffin will share some of that. Robert Semple is here from Student Services. Dr. McKellen, if she wants to do anything from EPS, to be able to share some of that as well. Robert, some of this is duplicate data, but I'm going to flip through. If you'll just kind of nod at me, I'll click through and then it's going to go to Dr. Griffin, then it'll come back to you again.
Just talking about school system data now, not county data, this is internal data. What you can see is basically a miniature version of what's happening in our county in our school system in terms of the rising number of cases in our in our district. I want to point out here that these were peaks right before we got out of school, the dip is here on the break. I think what I want to bring your attention to is we probably are looking at a new baseline as we go into Christmas. So if you think about how our reporting is working, at the end of every school day, at 3:00 or by 3:00, all principals are supposed to report to me four, six responses. Number of students quarantined in their building, number of faculty quarantined in their building, number of students isolated, which means that they produced some symptoms at school, so they were taken out of the population, number of faculty isolated, same thing, if you start feeling sick at work, you're removed from the population. And then the final two are the positives that they have, okay? That's every day. So now that we're on a break, principals are pretty limited in the information they're getting from from parents regarding students. Does that make sense? They're trying to keep tabs as much as they can on their faculty so that we can predict what it's going to look like on Monday. But I would say that this is a little artificial with regards to our internal data. Do you guys have any questions about that particular graphic? Okay, this one is where the rubber hits the road for school system. The next two slides, well, they're combined here, for operations. So the blue line that you're seeing is quarantined students from the beginning of school till now. And you can see it's pretty much a trend that you can, you don't have to have a trend line through there to know which direction it's going. Our peaks were the last two weeks of school in December where we were quarantining more than 500 students on average per day. That's an average number for the week, okay? 500 on average per day. Faculty trending at that point in the upper 70s per day. Now, what we've learned through this process, and Dr. Griffin will probably talk about this more than I will, is how many how many staff members can you afford to have quarantined to keep a school operating? And for a while, Dr. Phipps and Dr. Griffin, Dr. McKellen and I were, and Dr. Church, were talking about what's that magic number? If I were to see numbers going up for quarantined faculty, would it be 10? If I saw 10 faculty quarantined, would that be an indication that we had a decision to make? And what we found was some of our smallest schools were able to even continue operations with as many as 10 faculty quarantined. Because teachers step up, music teachers become classroom teachers, IAs take different responsibilities, and we make it work. But the point being that as we left school in December, we were at peaks for both. And then over the break, as we, as less people were in the building and as communication kind of fizzled through the Christmas break, then we're seeing this dip. What we're going to see on Monday or a week from Monday, I cannot tell you at this point.
And I want to speak on the quarantine with Anna on the line. Anna and the folks at the Health Department helped determine what the quarantine standards were. And we probably have quarantined more than we had to, but we felt like we wanted to be safe and make sure that we quarantined anybody who could potentially be at risk. And we've had those folks step out of the population for the required amount of time and come back. I feel like that has had a benefit on the total number of positives that we've had. So we've lost these individuals for 14 days or 10 school days, whatever it turns out to be. But we felt like we've also been able to depress the number of positive cases. The next chart's the same data.
Can I ask a question about that chart? Can we go back?
Sure.
Okay, so the faculty, is that everybody, is that include Ed Center people, bus garage, that's everybody?
Yeah, yes.
So the high was 70 out of how many people?
So, and again, that's an average, okay, per week. So for those two weeks, we were averaging 70 staff offline per day. That is, every site reports, just for complete transparency. So the Maintenance Department reports for maintenance, the bus garage reports for the bus garage, and then each school and the Ed Center reports its own numbers. And your question was out of how many people?
Yeah, so.
The number I'll use, and I'll go into it a little bit more in depth here in just a bit, and I gave some percentages, and I used the number 1,500 of total staff members. Now, we're a little higher than that, I just wanted to round it to make sure we're recovering who we were. That's total staff members. That means that with NHR, if a person, whether they're a full-time, part-time, bus driver, substitute teacher, that's all employees. And I'll give some data to show what we are with staff members.
And for students, the high was around 500 out of 11?
We're counting in-person students. So we're really looking at infection control only. Even in Caldwell-Connect, students that are attending Caldwell-Connect because they're not coming on-site, I would not necessarily know if they're being reported by a school as a positive, because we're really focusing on the students that are coming in-person.
And I know Dr. Griffin's going to say this, but I want you all to hear and I want the folks that are online to understand that because a person was put in quarantine does not mean necessarily that they have contact with a positive at school. In fact, Dr. Griffin will tell you that there are a lot of folks that have had contact in things outside of school, and we've taken that into account too, and they still quarantine with us. So this does not reflect positive connections or transmissions at school. And as Robert said, there's not a magic number on quarantine because it really depends on where it's happening and is it a, and I want to say we haven't had a cluster yet, thank goodness, at our schools, we've had no clusters. But if we have a large number of folks that are quarantined at a school, then we may have to deal with that. And I'd rather deal with it on a school-by-school basis than to shut the whole district down, unless there's a reason to do that.
Mr. Semple, back to Ms. Branch's question. She said she asked you 500 students out of approximately how many?
I think in-person's about nine?
92.
There you go.
The in-person is 92.
In-person. Those are rolling numbers. So a person that's out, that are counted in those numbers doesn't mean that we've had that many different students. That person is counted, if they're on a 14-day quarantine, they're counted for 14 days and that continues to roll. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So they're not adding two, they're still in the number. And then when they fall off on 14 days, and I'm using quarantine because that's the longest period of time in, then they would fall off after 14 days. So one person, whether it's student or it's faculty, affects us, the amount that they're in is a rolling number. And I'll give different numbers based on the number of specific people for faculty in just a bit.
That's why I'll just go with an average instead.
The percentage is similar.
So there's no way of knowing of those students who are quarantined, what that percentage might be who contracted COVID.
I have that for faculty.
Okay. But not for students.
Generally, those in quarantine are there just to be safe and to keep from the potentiality of spreading it, even though they may never be sick.
Absolutely. There are students that that had a positive test, and then they're counted as quarantined also. But the vast majority of the students on quarantine are not on quarantine because they were positive. And I can with all confidence say the vast majority of that 500 number were precautionary.
Right. Okay. So these numbers kind of correlate with what Robert had. The difference from what we're, I'm presenting to you from a HR standpoint of view, and this is only staff, I don't have any student information here, that's not part of Human Resources. The numbers that we're collecting, we have our employees communicate with us, and HR Department, as well as their supervisor, principal, administrator there at the school, on anyone that has anything related to COVID. So if a person is quarantined, if a person is out because they have a close contact with someone in the household or within school, or a positive, or if they've just simply been tested, then they cannot go to work until those timeframes exhaust. So these numbers that you're looking at here, anytime a person misses a day at work with the cause of or due to one of those factors, then they have to fill out a leave form. And for that leave form, that covers them for that timeframe because it was something related to that COVID. And we've kept those numbers and we've been studying those numbers throughout the entire pandemic to make sure that we have a complete understanding and we're also able to take care of our employees while they're out with COVID situations. The first graph that you look up here, a chart, is the COVID leave with return to work date on 1/4. So that's, that is Monday, this coming Monday, as we return back to school. One of the the things that we were a bit cautious of is, as we noticed, as Mr. Semple alluded to, we saw our our numbers kind of rising there with positive cases. In December, we were a bit fearful if this continues with this trend, what would it look like for us in January and will we be able to operate and open schools effectively? And that was a concern that we had. So we've asked all of our employees as well, and asked our principals to make sure they communicate with all employees that through the holidays, that our employees continue to communicate with us to make sure that they are speaking with us at HR so that we can have the best data possible going into the new year. This chart shows you that we have 34 certified and 13 non-certified for a total of 47 employees that are coming off of leave and will be reporting to work hopefully on Monday the 4th. That two-week window that we had, for those numbers I was talking about with Mr. Semple, that are kind of rolling numbers, that two-week gap got them off of either being that of being healed, able to recuperate, or if they were on a quarantine, that that two-week gap got them off that of quarantine. And the vast majority of all of our employees that were quarantined or out of work prior to that of the holidays are able to return by the January 4th. That's good news. So we should not have a huge gap returning on the 1st or the 4th of January. These are our numbers of COVID leaves, the return to work after the 4th. So we have had some come in, we've been able to collect data, and knowing who is not going to be able to return on the 4th. And as you see here, we actually have a total of 11 individuals that are still on quarantine or out for some reason due to that of COVID. So, you know, 11 people in a school system of 1,500-plus employees, not too bad. So my fears at that point, as of today, we're able to to believe that we'll be certainly okay as far as COVID-related stuff that'll be in school on January. Now, things can change, and I think certainly Dr. Phipps alluded to, as well as Mr. Semple, that we don't know what tomorrow brings, we don't know what Saturday or Sunday brings, but as of today, as we speak right now, these numbers are current. And I've been watching my email on my phone and things, these numbers are true as of this moment, right now that we know, okay? So really not that many out next week. These are a number of COVID-related leaves processed by by month. Each of these have been coming in. We do have the data back to March, but ultimately, this school year, starting in August, these are the number of leaves that our Human Resources Department has processed related to that of COVID. And you see August, 74, September, 111, October, 263, November, 248, and December, 208, for a total of 904 leaves related to COVID since August. The the piece here that I was a little taken back by, because I know the impact that we've all been dealing with here as of late, is the fact that our height was October. Since October, we have dropped in the number of COVID-related issues with our staff members. Now, the next slide that we'll see, I think, will show you the number of positives that have changed. But as far as the number of COVID-related issues, they have actually dropped since that of October. These are the number of staff positives, Jeff alluding to, as you can see, in August was one, September two, October 27, November 29, and then December 45. So although the number of issues and COVID-related scenarios that we're dealing with has decreased, the number of positive cases of those has increased in December. And that was kind of the effects that we were feeling as we got out on the break, the holiday break. This percent of processed leaves, positive by month, so we did talk about that, that these are the number of those 907 that were processed by each of the month. This is percentage-wise of those individuals that are positive. And I think this is very important that we look at, and we're able to see a 1.35% positive in August, September, 1.8%, October, 10.27, November, 11.69, and in December, 21.63% positive of those COVID, all COVID-related scenarios. So this tells me, number one, we do see an increase there in December. However, even in December, right at 79% of all employees that are processed are not positive. They're either on quarantine, they come back negative, they were tested, but right at 80% of our employees that are dealing with COVID-related issues are not positive. Okay, so I think that's important for us to keep in mind there. So I think that's important for us to keep in mind there.
And to stress again, this is none of those that have requested leave. This is not all of our employees, only those that process leave.
Processed leave of those and from what we're gathering. Although one positive is too many, and I want to stress that too. We certainly understand the value of anyone becoming ill with COVID. The vast majority, as Robert alluded to, of our individuals, staff-wise, and I don't have the correct percentage student-wise, but staff-wise, the vast majority, 80% of those are negative in relation. And then finally, the last graph that we have here, this is percent positive by month of all employees. So the last graph showed you the number of those that are COVID-related. This is the number of all employees and I utilized the number of 1,500 employees for Caldwell County School. We're a little bit larger than that, but for simplicity factor here, I just wanted to make sure that I gathered each of those. The number of staff members positive in each month, you see 0.07 in August, September 0.13%, October 0.18%, November 1.9, and December 3%. So 97% of our staff members that are operating in December were not positive. They're not dealing with a positive correlation with that of COVID or affected that. So pretty informative as where we are now and what we're looking at. Moving forward, from HR standpoint of view, I think the board needs to make sure that we do keep in mind these perspectives, that as of tomorrow, our FFCR A leave that was presented to our employees will be exhausted. It will no longer be in effect. So from tomorrow points forward, any leave that an employee misses work due to COVID will have to be processed using that of contagious disease policy in our employer's handbook of 9.4. And our nurses are working with us on that to help those employees, anyone who is utilized or is deemed to be that of contagious disease of COVID and inability to work because of those factors. So we'll be picking up all of those leaves. They're no longer covered under that leave that we had from the Family's First Corona Response Act that was running through December. To my knowledge, December 31st, to my knowledge, David, there is no legislation or the new budget that's passed that has had anything in it that I'm aware of that has extended that way.
That's correct.
I've not been given any indication. So I think that's important to know as we move forward. Also, from an HR standpoint of view, something that we always have to keep in mind, that I think is very relevant, is if the board decides to go to Plan C at any point from this point forward, all of our hourly workers are no longer covered. They would, many of our employees would not be reporting to work, being that we would be operating remotely and therefore would not be getting paid. That's something that we'd have to determine whom that affects, how that affects people moving forward, and what that looks like for those individuals. Because unlike our leave in the springtime where people were covered from that emergency state leave, we no longer have these leaves available currently. So those implications for all remote may be dire to some. It may affect some, or it may be something that we have a conversation about moving forward as to how those individuals are covered and what that looks like. But those are all differences as from what March of last year looked like versus where we did now in terms of that of staff members. Any questions, Human Resources-wise?
I don't think so, Mr. Semple. Starting in the next few days, it's no longer COVID leave.
So the Corona, the Coronavirus Response Act that was passed last year with our administration gave our employees, if anything revolving that around coronavirus, our employees were, had the opportunity to apply for or receive a leave up to that of 80 hours, two weeks, paid leave to be out with that of coronavirus. That does exhaust tomorrow. So anything, if an employee is out of work after tomorrow, then we as a local LEA, at that point, pick up them being out if that's covered. One of the ways that's covered is that with the information within our employees' benefits manual, contagious disease of employer, a person, employee, excuse me, cannot come to work because they could potentially spread a contagious disease, which we're dealing with with COVID. Then it would have to be up to our health director and that is on call now and has worked with us very, very closely to allow our nurses to make that determination. If they can't work due to that of COVID and to keep the spread of COVID from entering our buildings, at that point, the health director can put those employees out of work and they'd be covered by us as the LEA. But there's no longer a federal or state leave that covers those persons moving forward. It would have to be that our health director, our nurses acted on behalf of them moving forward, had the ability to cover those employees from that standpoint.
Teresa, that's a great question. And we got money from a couple of different sources. And some of the funding that we received runs out the end of this month, today or tomorrow. And then there's some additional funding that can be used a little bit later. We're going to continue to advocate for additional state and federal funding to help because this hasn't gone away just because 2021 comes in and we still have needs that we have to work with. We have some individuals, Dr. Griffin, that have been on quarantine multiple times.
Yes, we have.
And what happens with them?
They end up either taking their sick leave or recovering under contagious disease. So once they exhaust that 80 hours of the paid leave, then at that point it becomes an issue for them to deal with individually and the amount of leave that they have, that they recruit, or it could be either leave without pay, sick leave, depending on what they have in each individual circumstance or situation. But moving forward, that is costly to us or our people. But ultimately, we have to take care of our people because I don't think it's fair determination whether or not they come to work based on contagious disease.
So a quick question, do, on the contagious disease policy, I know we said we're going to cover them, but does that time come out of their annual leave allotment or?
No, that annual leave would be their vacation. So that would be, if we're covering those individuals, then it would be.
So we're not making them take their annual, okay.
Well, there's an additional cost to that too, because if it's a person in the classroom, then there's a substantial cost associated with that. So it's a compounding effect in terms of what the financial liability is for us. But it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, so we do have some individuals that we would be potentially, and we have been covering our sub-costs. Our sub-costs are quite costly to us and have been and they've worked some numbers with us. It's just all part of what we're dealing with. And I think that's part of the fight that our employees and our employers across the state are asking and advocating for as we move forward. Coronavirus is expensive and it's certainly impactful to our people. Number one, we want to advocate for health for our folks. Number two, on our regard, we want to make sure we advocate that we keep our persons paid and employed as we move forward as well. But there are certain realities to what we're doing.
Can I ask one more? Sorry. So do we know, I know you said on the Plan C, a large number of employees will not get paid because of their role.
Potentially.
Potential. Do we know what our surrounding counties are doing?
I'm just saying, I think.
Okay, okay.
I think, and certainly if those were directions moving forward, then those are conversations that we have to have as to who is able to work. Because if you're fully remote, there are certain individuals that aren't able to come to work, to do their duties. Those duties just aren't there. So those are things that we would have to certainly have conversations about as we move forward. As part of the realities and trying to be transparent also with all avenues that we do.
And this last question, I promise, may be a silly question, but when a teacher is not positive, so they're not physically sick and they're on quarantine, is there a possibility of changing, again, this may be so much it's not possible, but change their role while they're on quarantine so they can contribute back?
We have allowed, and we'll get in and talk with our administrators who have, about the potential of teleworking and what that looks like. I think that's a very gray and a little diluted subject to speak of as to what those jobly duties of that individual are. I would dare say that we have been very, very lenient as a school district to working with our employees, to try to assist them as we move forward and what teleworking does allow, what it does look like. Again, our major concern is, number one, the health and well-being of our people. And number two, making sure that moving forward, we are able to change or redirect job duties and what that looks like for this time being. And then at some point, hopefully those job duties come back to us as what we're accustomed to and what we're used to, once we meet this situation.
And I was thinking something, I know it's not as simple because none of it's simple, but you know, being an on-site teacher to a Caldwell Connect teacher, you know, during that timeframe, you know, to switch with somebody else. I don't know, I know it's extremely complicated to switch those roles, but.
It does. We try to keep things as consistent as possible for our students or understanding the different roles and even with the transition that we've had as a blade with curriculum and making sure that we give is, keep things consistent as we possibly can with our students in regard to who is delivering instruction, to move those back and forth on a weekly basis. I don't think it would be very beneficial to our students. However, we are thinking outside of the box as we move forward and trying to do everything we can to keep our people, again, actively employed and taken care of.
Before we move completely away from this chart, I want to make sure that listeners understand, we're not suggesting that 3% or 1.93% is a small insignificant number. If one person has COVID and they have any discomfort, God forbid a death or something like that, it's too many. But what we're trying to show you is what the numbers are overall. So certainly 3% is low compared to 100, but 3% of any number for staff members and people that we care about is too much. So we want to make sure that that message is conveyed too. We also sought some information from school nurses and the school nurses are out and about and are doing the work with our students on a regular basis. Come on up, Robert. They're helping with the day-to-day minutia that has to be dealt with with regard to the COVID response. And what Robert did, I'll have him walk through the questions that were asked and then what some of the responses were.
And before I get into it, if it's okay, I could not stand in front of you and have your attention without saying that perhaps the most important employees in our district right now may be the 11 school nurses that serve 25 schools in Caldwell County. That's not to devalue anyone else, but the roles that they're performing are intense. They are long-howered. It does not stop during the school day. Our 11 school nurses are responsible in large part for contact tracing each one of these cases that pops up and to hold the line. Probably when we talk about stress, when we talk about fatigue, our school nurses are right in the center of everything we're talking about. They're at the center of the political part of this debate. Every time they have to call a parent and say, we've got to quarantine your kid. I know that your son feels fine, but they were within six feet of a positive case for more than 15 minutes. They're the ones that get sometimes unkind words. But the work that they're doing is the reason, in my opinion, my single opinion, in large part, everybody has a role, but the work they're doing and the line that they're holding is why we are still operational. It's why we have not had a cluster in Caldwell County schools to this point because of the abundance of caution that they're employing every day. So if you get a chance to speak with a school nurse, please take a moment to thank them for all the work that they're doing. I asked our school nurses four questions prior to Christmas break and this was a desire just to be, to get input, to see what it feels like on the ground. Because as much as we want to debate it, like I was just talking about, they're living it every day. So the four questions were, do you feel that we should continue with our current model in January 21? Or should we move to all remote instruction? Again, I was talking about January. Do you feel that there's a benefit? And when I say benefit, oftentimes when we're talking about the four-day week, the concept of stress comes into play. Teacher stress, stress. This question is specific to COVID. Is there a value to returning to the four-day week at the elementary level from a COVID perspective? With Wednesday being a deep clean day. The two other questions were more open-ended and if you would like, I may or may not talk about some of the nuances because a lot of those things are just variabilities across schools and opinions and concerns. But if we click to the next slide, this is your responses to question one. So we have 11 school nurses. There, even though these answers are yes, no to this question, I want, I really want the board to know that the responses were more nuanced than yes and no. Okay? To a person, all of the school nurses that did say that we should consider possibly going remote, all of them said it would be a very finite period of time, perhaps two weeks to three weeks to get through what is feared as a big spike coming off of Christmas and New Year. They all acknowledged that this is a reluctant answer. They know that our students' mental health and our students' educational needs are right up there with infection mitigation. But eight of 11 school nurses felt like we should, that they would offer the answer that we should consider going to remote for a finite period of time in January. Three did say that they thought that we did not need to go that route right now. And again, they are all very well-thought-out responses. The one that comes to mind was research-based and it did state that schools are not really perceived as super-spreeder sites. And in addition to that, that the other needs of students outweigh the concerns of infection. Basically that our schools are the safest place that you can be. What's the argument there? One of the arguments for going to remote, if I'm offering one, was that our positivity rate in our county was still higher than what the research that they were looking at suggested it should be for us to remain operational. So none of these folks were saying, I think we need to go to remote because I'm tired. It was all very nuanced and very thought out. The second question, return to a four-day week at elementary, breaks down very similarly. If I'm being completely transparent, one of the responses was that there might not be a need to go to a four-day week at elementary school because those students are the same students all five days. So in essence, you've got the same, I don't want to sound unsophisticated, the same germs are coming through. However, at your middle and high school levels, there is an important advantage to having that Wednesday open because you're having a whole different group of students coming in on the B day. So you need to clean from one group to the other. Does that make sense? So there's an example of some of the nuance that was part of the answers. A lot of folks are acknowledging the stress at the elementary level of a five-day week and that trickles into it as well. But from a COVID mitigation standpoint, the majority did feel that returning to a four-day week at elementary with a deep cleaning day in between would be advantageous. I gave you a nuanced response about, that one person said about why it might not be as necessary at elementary. But again, the majority of our school nurses did say that they thought returning to a four-day week would be advantageous and one just couldn't make that decision. It was too much to talk about the balance between the needs of having students in school versus that one day off. So one upstanding. Any questions about our school nurses' responses? I mean, there's more information there than yeses and nos. So if you would like some more depth, I'm happy to give it to you, either now or later.
Where we are right now, and I just title this slide moving forward, we've got to talk about what scheduling will look like in terms of school grade levels. What does that look like in January? Is there a need to make a change? We have to keep an eye on staffing, as we know, the quarantine impact and what that has on us. You know, Robert said to me in a text yesterday, and I think that probably is the best analogy to draw. What we're encouraging folks to do is to think about this as an upcoming weather event that we have to prepare for. And I'm not downplaying COVID and weather, but when we're talking about upcoming weather, you have to have plans in place and you have to think about where your children may be if you're not in school. And even if we decide to go back and we're on the same schedule next in January that we are when we left in December, that doesn't mean that there won't be a school that's impacted and we have to close it down for a period of time due to quarantine. What will your game plan be if that happens? Because that will be with limited knowledge and notice until we have the ability to do that. There has to be a reciprocal, there is a reciprocal response in our community. When we make a decision about our operations, it affects the lives of every student and parent and sibling of those folks in the homes that they live in. It affects the parents and caregivers, guardians, grandparents, whomever they happen to be, with their work schedule. with their work schedule, whether they're even able to work. I mean, there is, there's that impact. Had a conversation with someone yesterday who told me that some of the churches do their planning of the programs and services they provide build around in some part due to what our scheduling of our school system is. So, you know, when we make a, when we make a decision, there's a ripple effect that affects lots and lots of individuals, and I know you all know that. And also the common good, whatever that is, however you define the common good of the health of our community and the health and well being, certainly the physical health with respect to COVID, but also the emotional, mental health, the economic health, the other pieces that we have that go into that. We want to make sure that we're preparing for the worst and that we certainly are hoping for the best and that we hope that when we come out of it, we realize that it wasn't as bad as it could have been and we were prepared for that, we feel like we were, but we didn't have to pull out whatever those resources are. I also want to encourage you to appreciate the different perspectives because the perspectives and the viewpoints and the lenses that the individuals that you interact with are very likely different than yours in some way. And I think those perspectives are very valuable. They help us in many ways to understand a clearer picture. But for me, it also helps, helps me understand that there's no perfect answer, that you're never going to please everyone with decisions that are made because people come in different, with different ideas. Considering some options, and this is not, again, I'm not trying to put anything on the table for you, but these are some things that we have heard and that we've seen. And Chris Becker asked about what other districts are doing, I'm going to show you that here in just a minute. One option would be to remain the same, to start our school year or semester two in January exactly the way that we ended the semester in December would be one of the options. And you can weigh the pros and the cons and what concerns you have or what advantages you think there are to that. The other would be to create a remote day. Right now, we have that Wednesday for middle and high school students that are in person. This would be a remote day for elementary, and it would be for deep cleaning, it would be for planning, it would be for interventions, it would be for a variety of meetings. It also would be for mental health and the stress level that our individuals have. Another option would be to go to Plan C. And you all, for the folks that are listening that may not know what the letters are, Plan C will be a remote learning plan where everyone would go back to remote learning for a period of time. And this could be, some districts are doing it through Martin Luther King Day a couple of weeks into January, others are doing it until the end of the month, and then they're trying to reassess where they are and make those decisions. You know, this would allow, some have said would allow faculty and students to quarantine for a period prior to returning to school, but we can't control, we have no guarantee that students or adults for that matter are going to stay at home and not interact with other people. And, and I, just being honest with you, have to admit that if we were to go to Plan C and expect all of our students and folks to stay put in one place, it's probably not going to happen. That would be the ideal picture, but there's so many places that they go. Our young children would be with caregivers, they may be with older grandparents, they would be with other individuals. So there's a, we have to weigh that as we consider what we can do. And then probably other ideas and suggestions. Several of our board members had an opportunity to talk with a staff member from the NCAE a couple of weeks ago. Some of these same concerns were raised about working conditions around stress and just the emotional well being of individuals. I know that the quote was, was said, or the comment was made, that there are a lot of folks now who know people personally who have COVID or who have, and I'm certainly in that boat, and my guess is probably you all are as well. When that happens, it rings close to home and it has a different meaning. And I think this has lasted long enough that most everybody has somebody who they're directly connected with one way or the other to know that this is really a concern that we need to have. So, you know, with that in mind, I wanted to share with you, and I know this may be hard to see, I sent an email out on Monday or Tuesday of this week to our superintendents in the RISA. And I asked them, as of the day of them receiving that email, what was their school system planning to do with respect to starting back to school? And the only district right now that's on this list, and I didn't include the school of death, and the reason for that is they operate more on a college semester type thing, they're not coming back until later in January anyway. So they were going to come back on a remote and then check and see where they were at. But these are the regular public schools that are around us. Burke County made the decision before the break, and you can see what's on here, that they're going to go remote through the month of January. Their board's going to meet again on January the 25th to discuss. All the other school systems that I talked to, and this is directly from the superintendents of those who responded on the list, are on the same schedule that they were on when they left in December. Now, that may change, and as we get to that point and the decision has to be made quickly so that people have enough time to respond, these may change depending on what conditions are. I will say that when you look at Burke County, and a lot of folks will hold up a county when it makes a decision and try to compare what's going on in their county to this county, whatever it happens to be. You've got counties that have had clusters and we've not had to deal with. You've got counties, some that have hospitals and retirement centers and things like that that become issues. It's not always an apples to apples comparison when you compare one county to another. And what I would encourage you to do is to consider what the unique needs are inside Caldwell County, and as we make our decision, make the decision that's best for us without trying to be specifically like a particular group on the board. And again, what I'm showing you is what I got yesterday and the day before, and these may change by the end of the week. I have no idea how many board meetings may be scheduled or, or when they may have some conversation moving forward, but wanted you to see that, just, just so you're aware of it. Okay? That's all I've got presentation wise, and I wanted to have an opportunity for there to be either questions, comments, conversations, there may be motions. We have two individuals here, Anna and Dr. Lowry are with us on Zoom, and before we get into all that, I just wanted to ask them to react to the information that we've shared and to talk a little bit about where we are moving forward. And Anna and Dr. Lowry, I'm not necessarily asking for a recommendation, certainly if you have that, we'd love to hear it. And we continue to say to you both that if conditions warrant, at any point you feel like there needs to definitely be a change done immediately, we certainly want to hear that from you all. But we've continued to work with you on those weekly calls, and then Anna and Robert and many of our folks work on a regular basis with the school nurses. But I want to turn it over to the two of you and see if you wanted to share anything with our board.
Well, thank you for, for allowing us to be here. First, I would just want to commend you all for the incredible work that you've done. I think my observation has been that, that the school board and the school system have been very proactive in facing this really an unprecedented crisis. And in talking to individuals on the board and in the, I know the calls that Anna and I participated in, it strikes me how knowledgeable you all are about really a, you know, an unprecedented disease and, and how well you've handled, handled this and how, how insightful your decisions have been. So I just commendations, commendation to all of you in that regard. I can't say where we're at. This is the worst it's been. It's no, no secret there. In July and August, we thought we were at a peak, and typically we, we were averaging in the hospital about 10 to 12 inpatients with COVID infections at that time. In the two respiratory diagnostic centers that Caldwell's been operating, we were on occasion having 200 patients on any given day presenting to the diagnostic centers. And then after August, we really noticed a significant downturn, and at one point, I believe in late September, we had two, two patients in the hospital. That's it, two patients with confirmed COVID infections. And then, then things started to ramp back up. And earlier this week, we had 49 patients in the hospital. Today, we have 45 with confirmed COVID infections. Typically now on an easy day, we have 300 patients going through the respiratory diagnostic clinics, and we've had as many as 400. The number of confirmed COVID cases in Caldwell County is almost 6,000, and, and what's concerning over the past month, every day, the gap between confirmed cases and recovered cases has widened. So probably a month or six weeks ago, the number of confirmed cases and recovered cases was very small, meaning there weren't that many active infections. But I can tell you today, there are over 2,500 active infections in Caldwell County, people who are actively contagious. And the last are not for North Carolina last week was 1.58, meaning that on average, an infected individual is going to infect 1.58 individuals. So, so obviously this is an explosive situation. The epidemiologic model that's updated every week from Chapel Hill indicates that we are still on a strict, on a steep upslope with a peak expected in mid-February. And after that peak, a gradual downslope indicating that we would be at the point we were at today on the downslope, not until mid or late March. So, so I think we're in for some, some rough weeks ahead. The two variables that aren't being taken into account in that regard are the vaccine and the post-Christmas surge. So the vaccine is very promising, and that, that is what is going to put an end to this. However, we don't know yet when the vaccine will be available to the public. We think shortly after the first of the year in incremental phases, but it's going to take time to get people vaccinated. It's not going to be a, a quick fix. So, so that's where we're, where we're at. I think there are some, some good things on the horizon. I think, without going into detail, I think we're going to be able to get some more resources into Caldwell County shortly. There is a treatment now that, for high risk individuals, particularly the aged with COVID infections, where they can be given monoclonal antibody, antibiotic therapy as an outpatient. And it's really the first effective outpatient treatment we have, and it prevents those patients from ending up in the hospital and getting sick and potentially dying. And we've administered about 200 of these doses in Caldwell County now. Of course, the vaccine is fantastic news. Recommendations for students, you know, this is a situation where they're, we're learning from experience, there aren't necessarily wrong or right answers. Oftentimes consensus is the, the best decision. And, you know, I think the, the question of remote learning versus onsite learning is a difficult question. I don't think there is a wrong or a right answer. On one hand, I think I would say that, that schools do seem to be a place of lesser spread, and one could make the argument that it's good to have students back in school where we know that they're going to be monitored, where mask use, social distancing is going to be enforced. I have six, six children, my youngest is 17, and I know when they're not in school, they're off with friends doing, you know, the things, the things that young people do, which usually don't involve mask wear and, and social distancing. So you could make the argument that being in a classroom is the safest place for children and adolescents. And I certainly would not be opposed to onsite learning in that regard. I understand the, the other side of the coin, the other issues as well in terms of remote learning, but I, I think that there are valid points on either side, and I don't think a decision in either way would be wrong. I, I might tend to vote for onsite learning as opposed to remote learning. But I have a tendency to ramble on, so I'm going to stop talking.
Thanks for allowing me to speak today, and I do want to say exactly what Dr. Lowry mentioned about how well everybody's doing there, especially with the school nurses. They are fantastic. If they're not working there, they're helping with testing with the health department, they're, they're always on their toes. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you're doing. There's been no clusters in the schools, and there's been high quarantine levels, but we, we understood that was going to happen. I want to kind of go over a little bit more stats with you guys about from this morning, just kind of give you an update. So total positives, we have 5,612 recovered, is 2,901. Total deaths, we have 76. The ages, I know we've seen a lot of charts on ages and things like that, but a little bit more of a breakdown we have is zero to five is 138, six to 10 is 153, 11 to 18 is 467. But the majority of our cases is in the age range of 25 to 49, and that's 1,955. Hospitalized, we have 61. So I just wanted to give you that data as well, just because, you know, we have seen a decrease in children and getting COVID and things like that, but an increase in the older population. So, you know, after Christmas, just like Dr. Lowry said, there's a possibility we'll see more cases just because of get togethers, things like that, just what happened after Thanksgiving. And also that, that'll bring an increase in quarantine in students and staff, possibility of positives, but hopefully we'll be able to quarantine those so there will be no spread. And then also we'll see the wave due to the holidays. So just like what everybody has said, school seems to be one of the cleanest places. We've not seen spread in the schools. There's been no clusters. Everybody's doing what they have been doing, so I really want to take the time to thank you for that. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or anything.
So Anna, do we, do we have the age of the 76 deaths, the age range?
The age range for, I'm sorry.
The 76 deaths?
They've all been over 55, if I'm not mistaken. More over 75.
This is the right time for you to ask anything that you want to ask. We've got two experts on the line, folks here to monitor this for nine months.
Well, I would just ask, and Dr. Lowry did, did in the end give us somewhat of a recommendation. And I would just like to hear from you as the professional of the decision that you are going to put forward today. And you've given a statistic that has been so valuable to us, and I wonder if he would be willing to say, continue on the path or change path, or what he would be willing to say, and not to put you on the spot, just the best that he can do for us.
I just want to make sure I heard right, just kind of my recommendation, like what paths. Okay, I'm really hearing, I'm sorry. You know, with what we've seen, I agree with Dr. Lowry, but also I'm not in the school system, so I would highly recommend taking the school nurses' opinions as well. But, you know, with what we're seeing, the ages that we, we have, the school age children is, is not been most of our cases, has been older. But like I've mentioned too, if we do go back, the quarantines will be increased. And I know that before, that was kind of one of the issues with staffing and things like that. So either, either or, like Dr. Lowry said, would be okay. I would just take in consideration the school nurses' opinions as well, since they're highly involved in, in those with the children.
Anna, this is Joe Griffin here. Speaking of quarantine, I know the CDC has recommended that number from 14 be leveled down to 10. Is there any discussion, I would hear in your group, about changing the amount of quarantine moving forward? And certainly we, we value your opinion, we'll always operate with what you've got to recommend.
We talked with the school nurses and I believe administration at the school system, and we wanted to stay with the 14 days just to be, be safe and be extra cautious. The 14 days, just, just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, I can add, add to that. The CDC really still holds by the 14 day quarantine. When, when you look at the data that even the CDC presented, they, they looked at the risk of conversion to active conversion to active disease after each day of quarantine. And at day ten, if someone has had a high-risk exposure, at day ten after that exposure, if the if the person is having no symptoms at all, they still have about a ten percent risk of 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 developing disease. So it's not insignificant. In the CDC recommendation, what they were advising is that at day ten, if if a person has had no symptoms and they have a negative test, a negative PCR test, that the risk of going on to develop active disease is less than one percent at that point. So what they were advocating really was for healthcare workers who need to get back to work, that abbreviating the quarantine from fourteen days to ten days is acceptable if an asymptomatic person undergoes a test and is also negative. And but but short of that, there's no value in in decreasing quarantine less than fourteen days.
Dr. Lowery and Anna, you both mentioned this, I think you just touched on it. Can you give us what you expect to see happen across the county in the first part of January? With post-New Year, post-Christmas, do you expect similar to what we saw on Christmas higher, or do you think it's leveled off?
Oh, I I think it's increasing. I don't want to be pessimistic, but the epidemiologic projections before Christmas were that we would see a sharp increase through January and through the first half of February. And that didn't take into account Christmas. And I think what we saw from Thanksgiving was you know, a lot of gatherings, a lot of travel, and I didn't see any change in behavior with Christmas. So yeah, I'm I'm expecting it to be much worse in January. I hope I'm wrong.
I agree. It's the same feeling here. We've seen a lot of positives every day. It's been increasing more and more each day, and I feel like, you know, and I'll be completely honest, the day that we had two hundred, it seemed like we had delay getting positives from the provider, so that's why that day was so high. But it seems like our day of getting so many positives keeps increasing daily. So it's just getting worse, and I feel like, you know, people getting together after the holidays, you know, Dr. Fip, she mentioned New Year's, things like that. The only way we'll be able to, besides the vaccine, is to stop this, is just kind of limit the gatherings and do the three Ws. So, you know, limiting things like that, but I believe that we will see an increase in the next few weeks.
And one thing I'd say about that with gatherings as as well, what we see in healthcare settings, not just at our own, but around the country, the people who, healthcare workers who are exposed and who go on to develop disease, it's because they're not wearing masks. So they may work all day in the ICU and be very diligent about wearing PPE. And then they they go home and and go out with a friend or whatever and and don't wear a mask. And that's where the exposure happens. So I I think it's not so much gatherings as it is gatherings combined with relaxation of what are very effective control measures, social distancing, mask wear, hand washing. So it's not so much the gathering, it's the fail to failure to adhere to what are known protective measures.
Is there an advantage to having their K5s give back to a four-day week versus the five-day that they have been going to? Is there a a big advantage to giving them that chance to be off to do the things that they
Having that day in the middle would be for the deep cleaning, like you've mentioned, which would be good for just taking that time to clean, like you said. Then also, I know we've talked about it here as well, but you know, if you did have a positive in the classroom, you would look at that contact tracing and, you know, if they didn't go on Monday and Tuesday, but they're there on Thursday, you would know when to quarantine, they weren't around, they would not be around people all week long. So, I mean, that that's two advantages on our end that we can think of.
Yeah, and I would also say the testing still is is the general testing for most people is still not rapid. The turnaround time with most testing centers is forty-eight to ninety-six hours, usually two to four days. And it's variable, but that extra day can be enough to to ensure that test results are back and that, you know, COVID just slows everything down. It just gums up the system and, you know, when people you're trying to adhere to normal guidelines, that's when mistakes happen to you. People get tired, they get lax in their personal protective procedures. So yeah, I think there's advantage in in having an extra day.
I'm just saying that our mission statement says supervise quality instruction. And I think kids with more quality in a face-to-face environment and went on to yet a mission statement says in a safe and caring environment. So we got to share about our kids and what you So what I say today is continue on what we've been doing, but maybe consider Wednesday as a remote day without the sound more of that for middle bell. And that is a K5, a K5. And plus, I should follow the best of October, what's that? But those may change the day and sort of what
So I have a different opinion. Ninety-nine percent of what he said I agree with, but I think that the very finite period of time, the two weeks, you know, of of January, and maybe we reassess, the public have the numbers or the information that we need because the kids haven't been in school. But I think the proactive, which we talk about a lot, of trying to keep the kids out of school for those two weeks, knowing there's going to be a major spike, or assuming there's going to be a major spike based off of what we've known before. I I recommend the Wednesday for elementary for deep cleaning, and then the two weeks, like they like the nurses recommended, the two-week time period, the first two weeks of January.
I would agree with that. Teachers get encouraged to have a very much larger and ready to do that. I know there's a lot of time on here, it's on Wednesday, we're talking about Monday, everybody prefers this for practice in case there's some situation to get back to the plane state to have that grade.
I, you know, I think our teachers are, I think, put, like, want to have adapted all year. So they know, teachers knew that we were ready to stay, and that there could possibly be a change. But I don't know that they would be ready at eight o'clock in the morning. But I certainly think that they can on Monday, if that's good.
And I think the team here is, if that's the decision, if they really, we would encourage, but I think that it's a two-week period, not two.
So here's your suggestion, most two-week period of correct, for everybody. And then the deep cleaning on Wednesday to continue after that for elementary only. Or how long? I don't think there's a timeframe, I think it's an infinite, you know, right now, it's just like in in high school, there's, you know, there's not a timeframe. So to me, I I recommend, or I would say, you know, an infinite amount of time. Or or unless, you know, we deem necessary, the numbers are really decreasing, you know, and we feel it's safe. Then, I mean, I don't think we can put a time on it, no, I don't feel like that, you know, myself.
I'm going to read his name.
Sure, sure.
And I would know what day is Wednesday, if we can.
But of course, we all want kids, our kids in school five days a week. Then unfortunately, that's what we can do now. Our recommendation would be to delay in-person learning for at least three weeks and reevaluate end of that two weeks, based on input from the nurses, based on the fact that the numbers soared after Thanksgiving. And you know, I guess I would hope that comes out to be a bad decision. And I remember it's low in P5, counting Saint John's, it should have been at school looking at these numbers. But I think I'd rather be safe than smart.
All right, I understand. Kids are safer in school. I think we should go back, just like we did and not change the movement. We have changed so many times, I think that we should, of course, roll until statistically tell
Good morning. Does your recommendation, what about Wednesdays, would you change the K5 to have a Wednesday?
Yes, I would change Wednesday to the low home for the entire K5.
So, and are you recommending no change for the middle and the high school, those beaches that they already date as before for Wednesday?
That was one way, so I would check. I can imagine.
Dr. Fitz, one other question that I have in this discussion and the information, because we're still getting the information, I think, is that high school boards are still, and middle school boards are still scheduled to take place, is that correct?
I see any changes on that.
And so if that is the case, our students are going to be, we hope doing the the recommended steps, masks and so forth, and social distancing. But we do anticipate that that piece will continue. And so my question is that if we, we as a board are sitting here knowing that those interactions are going to take place in that way, and and you're looking at instructional offerings, do my thought is then we do need to continue some sort of structure, instruction here. There is a face-to-face teacher involved.
Sarah, I just want to ask you, are you ready to change recently to to return, whether to completely face-to-face approach? Anytime?
Well, the the recommendation that one of our colleagues made was for everyone to have a Wednesday deep cleaning, right? And I'm certainly in favor of of moving in that direction to give give them that opportunity. As Dr. Fitz has said, that at any time that an R doctor obviously may make, they can make a change, we can make a change immediately. I think the data and the numbers, the numbers are real, the numbers are there. They they spiked after Thanksgiving. Last week, the news topic, it was reported that said the high schools said the high schools I recommend two-week remote instruction and delayed conversation about these. The question for Wednesday was, do you think there's a benefit to a four-day week? I think everybody can say yes. But what if the question were also there? Do you think there's a disadvantage to a four-day week? And I would like some input on on that too, because I don't think it's as simple as, yes, there's an advantage. I think, yes, there's an advantage and there's a disadvantage. And disadvantage is not including kids who stay here, they're not going. And then coming back together. So I'd like to maybe get some input from the nurses and waters on and what that might be, so maybe we can weigh both sides of it. And service claiming, you know, the value of service claiming, because more and more information is out there that it's there more. And lots of comments based on service claiming. Maybe for this session.
I think my biggest, is the face of delaying the decision, obviously, is one of that things we're complaining about. And I hope not, I never did take this all the way down the D-line. The future is their plan and their weeks.
And not just taking it, but Ms. Ranch, just one one clarification. On the school nurses' response, even though they were trying to wiggle into the zone of stress and teacher stress on the Wednesdays, I made them respond to that question from a COVID mitigation standpoint. Did they think that that Wednesday would actually help mitigate COVID? And I really appreciate Anna mentioning something that I should have said, but I forgot to say. One of the reasons for the Wednesday was the anticipation of increased cases and the burden of contact tracing, so many cases that our nurses get become overwhelmed. So by having that Wednesday, we give them a chance to make those phone calls and to catch up on what we anticipate being higher numbers than what we experienced before. So that was just some of the, I know when I was talking, I I rambled a little bit myself, but 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 that was part of the question. Was purely for COVID mitigation, not this neck to the throat.
Yeah. What do you think? You have time? You're on mute.
How about now?
Yeah, we do now.
Okay, two things. One, I could not hear what Chris Bumgarner said. Secondly, a question for Mr. Stipple. And you can hear my dogs in the background. In the survey, it was three to leave everything as is, and eight nurses wanted to do a two-week window, is that correct?
I don't know that all of them specified two weeks, but they all said not to be like a grading period. Not just all, but specifically to address the spike following Christmas. Two weeks and a whole team not.
But but did you not, did they not also, most of them say, or maybe I misunderstood, say that. Uh, if we went back to the four days, you know, Wednesday off, they may have swayed the other direction, or did I misunderstand you?
No, I don't think that there was a, it was an either or. I think that the majority of the nurses. Uh, were advocating for uh, what I would call a pumping of the brakes after Christmas, taking a finite amount of time. Um, in remote instruction and the majority of the school nurses also were advocating for a four-day week for K five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, sir. And what was Chris's, what was, what did you say, Chris?
The last thing I thought was just speaking to what Mrs. Branch had said, she was was talking about delaying. Uh, or pretty much making this making the decision on using that Wednesday as a remote learning deep cleaning day. And I had just said that that my concern with delaying that decision was um, because of the planning involved for teachers and doing that makes it also parents and caregivers. Childcare issues and things like that. The week that was.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
So I'm not sure. Go ahead, Mr. Stimple. I was, I don't know who to ask this to, but so coming off of the Thanksgiving break, do we know, I mean, was the spike? Two days after they returned to school? Was it two weeks after they returned to school? Do we? Do we have any information on when that, you know, when those highest days were?
So um, our highest peaks for student quarantines were the week of twelve eighteen, December the eighteenth. The week of December the eleventh, so I'm going in descending order. Uh, so the eighteenth was our peak. These other were spikes on the ground. So twelve eighteen, twelve eleven, eleven twenty-seven, twelve four. So back to December and ten nine. For student quarantines, for faculty quarantines, um, the highest week was actually the week of ending on December the eleventh. Then in descending order, December the eighteenth, December the fourth, eleven twenty-seven, November the twenty-seventh, and November twentieth. So all the other spikes are lower than those. Those were the five.
That's a quarantine spike versus a test positive spike?
Okay, those those were quarantines.
Okay.
For student positives, the highest numbers that we had on a week ending, okay, was twelve eighteen is the highest. Twelve fourteen, eleven twenty, ten twenty-three, and the beginning of the school year.
It's almost the same, okay. But and also keep in mind, the number of leaves that we had processed from October through November, December have decreased.
Sure.
So although there may have been some sort of spike, our highest number of. Scenarios with COVID was that of October. Of course, our our health professionals are are stating that we may see increased numbers moving forward. Maybe true. We don't, we don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I still have a chair question. Dr. Church, can can you talk a little bit about what athletics would look like if we ran a Plan C for any period of time?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about. We're in the process of finishing up season one, moving into season two. Most of the high schools and middle schools have set their uh, have met their winner, their basketball, the basketball teams. Those teams have been, they've had their tryouts and they've set their teams and play will be starting in early January. Um, I believe if we go to, if we go to fully remote, I don't know that um, we would want to go fully remote and then have athletic events. Uh, that's something we would need to consider us to consider also. And so if we we do go full remote, I would recommend that we suspend season two athletic events as well. Just a thought.
How's the state going to view that? There there will still be an attendance, there's still even other.
The there's, yes, there's a form that uh, we would have to fill out for the state. Actually, we just filled one out, turned one in yesterday. Uh, one of our high school athletic teams was quarantined. The whole team was quarantined. And they could not finish out the rest of the season. It was a volleyball team. And that form was sent in to the to the uh, to the state, so it would be no contest. But uh, I mean, they, the state would have to uphold the the recommendation of our school board because. I mean, we're looking out for the the interest of of all of our students. So, you know, based on the decision that the board makes, uh, we would just tell the state that's what our decision is.
I could also say there are been very planned state of. Tensive hardship on some athletes getting practice. But uh, I know that's not our uh, major concern at this time. Uh, I think that could could be issue. Would would even practice be on the table if we're not able to meet face-to-face for classroom? I could be discussed meeting for athletic purposes. Classroom. I stand by my decision. To continue life again. Uh, our athletes have missed out. Spring baseball. Pushback basketball. And some of these kids, some of them just play sports. That's why they got to do that. So I recommend, once again, continue life again, unless government. Or health official tells.
Okay, so can I ask a question? Obviously, we we got different uh, opinions there. And I think it was Chris Becker that asked the question of the spike numbers when they started. And if I understood, it seems like it was about a two-week window till those numbers started going up. And and you know. I think we're all anticipating that's probably going to be the case again. We don't know that. But also, both health officials did say that they felt the plans we were under was safe. And I, there's not, there's not even a question, no thinking. I know every person in the room is concerned with safety. Uh, if we all knew the right answer, you know, that would be great. But uh. What's the thoughts on having, uh, you know, the ch- the children going back as they are? And maybe doing the 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 Wednesday cleaning? And us have a meeting again in two weeks to see if the numbers. Are coming to where we we need to to go to Plan C? And I don't know if that's, I don't know what anybody's thoughts are on that. Just just trying to think out loud.
That was the reason for my original question, and I appreciate what Joe has suggested because. One decision precipitates so many additional things. And one of the things that we heard from. I believe it was Dr. Rippon, who perhaps not, um, correct me if I'm I'm wrong, but. What happens to our employees who are um, would would not be able to work? And that's a a whole continuous um, uh, thought that we have of caring for all employees in your system. So our decision today is multi-level and it affects multi-people and events within our county. And um, um. I think that a compromise would be what Joe has just suggested. And in fact, if their numbers go up based upon the recommendation, Dr. Fitz, you have reserved the right to make an immediate change. Um, I guess you would call it then or whatever, but uh, and to to um, change the school with the cluster and so forth. And so um, I I concur with what Joe has just said and um. It it gives us an opportunity to try to get our children back, to have the Wednesday as the cleaning day. As many of their people have contacted us. And it also looks at the numerous um. Entities to which we're responsible. We we're we're constantly caring about all of our adults who are employed, our teachers. We care about our parents and we're here because we each believe in educating our children and trying to give them the best education we can. So um. Have tried to stimulate each piece of information we've had today and um, I'm I'm concurring with what Joe has just expressed.
You know, I think obviously, we're all beginning, we all care deeply about our students, our teachers, our staff. And uh, we all also rely quite heavily upon the advice from our medical professionals. And they have indicated that probably having their students in the school is as safe a place as possible if they are. Uh, if there's a two-week window of remote, we can encourage them to be in the house, quarantines. You know, do what they do and and on the computer and so forth. But we all know that they're going, they're young people, they're going to be complicated, they're going to be uh, socialized with with others during that time as well. Uh, that's not to say that the students who are in school, well, after school, they're probably going to do the same thing, but uh. You know, we uh, we also have parents that are going to be really strapped to try to get to childcare. And I have also heard that uh, uh. Nurses in the hospital are also affected by that because they have children. And when they have to stay home with their children, then obviously that provides a shortfall. Uh, in our medical facilities to uh, take care of those people who are there for uh. You know, for their related situations or whatever other medical situation that takes on that. So uh, you know, I would agree with uh, with what Joe said. And I think uh, what we, my personal opinion is that we go back. And that we uh, allow Wednesday as a deep cleaning, planning, remediation day. We know our teachers are, we appreciate our teachers and we know that they're going to do the things that they need to be doing on that remote Wednesday. And that would uh, uh, yeah, that would be.
So I I do agree as well that that a good compromise. You know, I'm I'm changing my own mind here, but based off of what what I'm hearing from, you know, from our from our colleagues. A good compromise is to, you know, do the Wednesday deep cleaning, um, and and potentially wait on the two weeks. Um, because even based off of the eighteenth, you know, the the spike was after two weeks, really. Um, so I I'm not sure that the two weeks would really be effective. Um, and maybe, um, like we said, you know, Dr. Fitz, you have the, obviously, the the right to call us back in and, you know, we need to reverse that decision. Um, but but I think too, um, you know, as as Ms. Edwards said, that the the, we're not just talking about the kids. Um, you know, we are talking about the the other staff that are, we're going to have to do something with and for, you know, for those two weeks. Um, and we're basing that off of what we think is going to happen versus real numbers. Um, so I I I agree with Joe. I think a a good compromise would be um. Yeah, a a wait on the two weeks, but go to the the Wednesday. So Joe, I I appreciate that uh, that information.
Which is basically this last day.
Thank you.
What Anna just said. And uh. Uh. As Chris you indicated there, we can, we can change very quickly. You know, if if Dr. Lowry and Anna and uh. Or Easton, any of the others, you know, feel like that we need to chip gears, that's something that can be done very, very quickly. But uh, at at present time, I agree, I support the uh, uh. K five Wednesday as a deep cleaning, uh, one of that. And. Get back to a regular schedule as we help him. And that's not going to impact any more. Uh, adversely the athletic situation, which uh, you know. At athletics is very important in school system. It's not the most important thing at this point in time. Because what we're going through is the most important thing in health sector, our our students, our teachers, our coaches and all those is is extremely important. But uh, since the High School Athletic Association has come up with, you know, the various seasons. And we uh, need to provide an opportunity for those students to achieve this.
Dr. Church, do you know, is this the one, when does football start?
Football begins February eighth or with eight.
Is that like start games or start practice?
Yeah, start of practice, Chris, is uh, February and then games. I think it's a seven-game season this year.
Basketball.
I mean, they just, yeah, they just go all in all and I think through those four.
And I think they're all very failed in their seasons. But they they will be ready to get into their abbreviated state layoffs for property management students. There's a time for a month. So I don't think, don't have those, you don't have a recommendation or leave on that, uh, just make motion.
We'll all have that motion. Okay, my my recommendation and my gap is to have a two-week period again in semester script. But I I I agree with Chris Becker. I don't think it's going to be week two. I think it's going to be week three, week four, week five. And I can see that two weeks permanent, four weeks or five shots. And I think at the very least, we need to have something between on those Wednesdays, but I think it needs to be on limited amount of time. If they go for everybody to know, you're just going to try to get back five days and normal functioning. But there there's a lot to consider. You have to balance all of those factors and and we're going to support the direction that you all want to get here and make the nice. So Chairman Penelope, we need to make two. But I I, but I guess we need to vote on them separately, or would we? The Wednesday versus staying the same or or I guess we don't really have to vote on staying the same.
I I think we're going to probably need a motion because staying the same with being K five would be a five-day uh, right, school week. So there's probably one motion that's the last. To alter that part of it. So is there a motion from? Anyone? Concerning uh, how we perceive. I'll make the motion. That we continue as we've been doing. So. Like Wednesday. Okay, everybody, just heard the motion. There's no second.
Excuse me, do you, do you mean, I heard you say remote, did you mean Wednesdays are deep cleaning?
Yeah.
Okay, there there's a difference.
Okay. One second, there's no, is Wednesday?
He said.
It would be a remote.
It's a remote.
I seen waiting there. Okay, uh, we have a second.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Any, there's some comments or questions?
My question is, how long is the Wednesday, the, the, the Wednesday? Did he put a stipulation on how long Wednesday was going to be used as remote and deep cleaning?
Uh, the, again, uh, I, I think that's something that we need to assess as we move further down the road here in the next two, three weeks.
So, so just to clarify, he made a motion, everything stays the same other than Wednesday for K-5 goes back to remote and deep cleaning day, and there's not a specified amount of time for that?
Uh, and that deep cleaning daily on Wednesday.
Correct, it's on Wednesdays, but there's not, it's not a timeframe, it's not two weeks, not a month. It's, it's until we make a decision to go away with that.
That's the way it was, there's, that's how I'm saying.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to say, well, thank you to teachers for what they've been doing every day, especially since March 2020. And for stepping up and doing the unites. We appreciate you and, and I'm not speaking for the board on this, but I'm personally sorry there's not a workday for you to come back to after Christmas this year. That, that, that is so desperately needed and I know. Thank you, thank you, teachers. And two sentences I want to read, because there is data out there that shows our numbers are, are very high. Two sentences ago, the news talked last week. COVID-19 is spreading rapidly statewide. The Powell County currently has the second highest rate of new cases in the state. According to new numbers released by State officials on Tuesday. Powell County's rate over 14 days amounts to 1,327 cases per 100,000 people. The only county with a higher case rate is Mitchell County, Northwest of Huracan. Our numbers are very high, our percentage is over 12%.
Okay, information. About the, the Powell County, Powell State. Yeah, you're going to pull up the chart that, and I don't, I don't know how accurate this data is, is what I look at. It's from the Brown University School of Public Health. And it's just something I've been looking at for months. And I don't know what changes the metric, North Carolina was, that's what the PHHS, that's what I have right there. In terms of Powell County, the, the green dots, teal color represent positive cases. The yellow is a rolling seven-day average. So you can see from, from their data there that there's a downward trend, but that's, that's not necessarily reflected in the data that we've seen that has been reported. So I'm not sure if, if there's a disconnect with that maybe right there. Again, I think you have to take into account that we're between Christmas and New Year's, and I'm not sure that anybody could be tested or who needs to be tested. It's only, and I don't know how to interpret that. But the, the other number from Brown is over here, the captain who click on North Carolina on the right-hand side. Where the plus is beside North Carolina. Get that now, into North Carolina on the left-hand side. And I get it right-hand side and it's, it's one of the counties, we're number 13 in that list. Again, I don't know, again, this, hit the plus beside North Carolina on the left, on the right, on the right.
Yes.
Right there. That, that shows you right now, based on their data, and it's, it's based on cases and where the counties are. At one point, we were at the number three, and maybe until I lost contact for a few days when I was out of surgery. But that's the data right now that's reported on that website today. I don't know how that relates to the state. But certainly from 13 out of 100, you're in the, you're in a proportion. And the red counties that, that show, this is not necessarily the red chart that the governor has. This is another metric to look at. And, and there's change from red to yellow, orange depending on what the cases look like in, in your town. So actually, the two away from being in the red, you've been in the red for the better part of six weeks. The neighboring districts are. Then.
And just for information, on Powell County's Department website, there's a map of all the counties with four different shades of blue, with dark blue for 861 cases or more showing the highest number. Powell's one of, of several counties that, that's in the dark blue with 1,343 cases. And that's current data.
I would agree that if we did keep all students in, you know, their home and so forth for a period, two weeks. And we would probably be in a much different situation. But, you know, that's not going to happen in our medical professional system. We have basically indicated on the very outset of this that we're going to rely heavily upon. Has indicated that that is the safest, best place for them to be. Because of all the protocols which they have, you know, been so in, in favor of what we've been doing. And I think we have done a great job. I think we need to be continually diligent each and every day. And I appreciate the, the job that the teachers do, that the staff does, that this board has done, certainly Dr. Fitz, Robert, and, you know, everybody here, the Edsman, has just worked tirelessly on this situation. And I know that you're going to keep us abreast of what's going on, on a daily basis.
Any other comments, questions?
But just to be back on what you just said, that school is the safest place for kids, and I've been looking at that. So are we sending the message, it's the safest place for kids Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but not so much on Wednesday? And, and the hardship and the, and the results that they would save for them being, being at home. They're going to be, they're going to be at various places on Wednesdays, I mean.
But I imagine they would be on weekends as well, so I don't, you know, just don't have any control on where they are. On, during the weekends, or would be on, on that end. You know, that was a, a day so that the teachers could, could benefit from the deep cleaning. The opportunity for additional planning for their, for learning opportunities that day for meditation. Yeah, I would imagine certainly on this, there's going to be some social discussion as well. Just do the best.
Chairman Penn, I, I think we, we still reserve the right, or Dr. Fitz does, to, to reconvene. And if that Wednesday shows, you know, that now our, you know, K-5 kids are, you know, those numbers are starting to rise, that, you know, we can attribute that to, you know, potentially that Wednesday of them being off. And, you know, again, you know, reverse that decision, I mean.
Well, those numbers too will help, I think, you just call it.
Right.
Decision they take. Very little.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions?
You know, the, we're extremely concerned about our staff and teachers. We know that they are in the schools, but there, there's social distance going on. There, there is themes going on on a regular basis. There, there is mask wearing and, and certainly, you know, hospitals, they have the, the, the one-way halls and various other things that are all part of the protocols that, that works in the workplace and then our medical people stay in the workplace. You know, the people that do actually work on a regular basis in their place of work are, they involved in social distance. Are they involved in the mask wearing, are they involved in the deep cleaning and so forth? You know, it's, I, I guess I'm, I'm saying that teachers are probably in the classroom in a, let's say, environment than some of the people that are working out. You know, in, in industry or in business or in department stores or grocery stores. But we still want to make sure that our teachers and staff and students are safe. Certainly, Dr. Fitz and advisors to get back together anytime they change. And probably set the, so anybody else?
Anybody else? Okay, those who voted the motions that, any of us?
I can.
Okay, motion passes.
Well, Fitz, I thought we were up there to just ask our, our parents in light of the decisions that we make. I don't know what January is going to hold. I am concerned about quarantine numbers. And I would encourage you to begin to think about alternative plans if we have to quarantine a school or the entire school system has to be impacted. To know what your plans would be as, as we move forward. So we just don't know right now exactly when or how that would be impacted. We feel certain there will be some impact and you need to have this conversation ahead of time.
Yeah, no one else said anything, right?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Any, any, who can say?
Second.
All right. All those who voted say aye. Please be bothered to read it, work station.